The school board meeting will begin in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in two minutes. The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good morning. The September 1st, 2023 special school board meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order at 8:30 a.m. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I'll ask that we now observe a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now ask the vice chair, Thrower, to please read our board commitment statement. Good morning, Ms. Thrower.
Good morning, Dr. Campbell. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on silent. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes, we'll be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operations of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or on matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach-colored form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime-green colored form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 8:40 a.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Now, if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Gullett, would you like to make a recommendation on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nice to see you. Happy Friday. I recommend approval of the agenda for the August 1st, 2023 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D-10.1, D-10.2, D-10.3, and D-10.4 that have been placed under discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. And it is the September 1st instead of August 1st. I believe that was inaccurate in the script.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
August 1st.
Thank you. So may I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion, that was simultaneous. Motion by Vice Chair Thrower, second by Dr. James. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Martinez, can you please provide a proof of publication for today's meeting? Good morning.
Good morning. The notice for the September 1st, 2023 special board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on August 25th, 2023. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you so much. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board today. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at today's meeting either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 10 minutes after the meeting start. This evening's speaker will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order received by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time, but if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, are there any speakers today?
Not at this time.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-7.1 through C-9.1, with the exception of items D-10.1, D-10.2, D-10.3, and D-10.4 that have been placed under discussion?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings, second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion? Oh, Dr. Gullett, would you like to offer up some feedback on each of these discussion items? I believe you have a member of your team who'll share with us.
I certainly do. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Knight is here. Mr. Reverend Knight is here. And all of these items, D-1.2 through D-10.4, are items regarding growth and new construction. So Mr. Knight is here to share a few items pertaining to this and also to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, Dr. Campbell, Chair, and members of the board. Dr. Gullett, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today on these four items. As you know, the board has expressed a desire to construct new schools to help with overcrowding situations, localized overcrowding, and especially our elementary schools. In order to get a design team and a contracting team involved, we produce a selection process from which to pick these professionals. The process itself is a three-step process. We advertise for qualifications. In the case of an architect, they produce a submittal book either electronically or in paper format that answer these criteria that are in the advertisement. So we will go through such things as vetting out whether or not they're licensed, whether or not they are insured correctly, whether they are a minority or a business-owned entity because they get points for that, same thing if they have a head office in Ocala or in Marion County proper. From that point, we form a selection committee. That committee consists of representatives, in this case of curriculum, because we are looking to design a new school. If it's for another entity such as transportation, we would have those folks involved. But we have representatives from the administration, mostly from finance as well when we do these selection processes, and obviously from the curriculum department in this case. So the selection committee meets and scores according to criteria that's published in the ad, such things as whether or not the entities have any litigation or disputes to speak of that we might need to know about and certainly impact our liability as a school district. We also ask for things such as their staff, their staff's capabilities. We look at projects of similar scope and size so that we can ensure that we have a firm that's familiar with school design, especially in Florida, because we had different regulations than other entities within the state. Once those criteria are scored, we produce a shortlist of firms from which to seek interviews with. Usually, we go with at least three, sometimes as many as five firms, depending on where the scoring comes out at, but it's always a minimum of three firms. Those interviews consist of three primary topics where we carry on discussions with those teams. So such things as the project approach, what in particular does a firm do to ensure that Marion County School Board's needs and desires are met within the design. In addition, we look at the project team itself, who handles what aspect of design, who is the person on the ground when construction starts to ensure that quality is not an issue, not only in design but also when we get into construction, and also how they select their consultants, how their team communicates information to us as the owner, and also how that information is communicated with the contractor when the time comes for construction. Once the interviews conclude, a ranking is produced that we take to the board for a recommendation by the committee of the highest-scoring firm. Upon approval of that recommendation, that allows the facilities department to engage in a contract negotiation with selected firm. And then, when we do get a contract negotiated, that comes back to the board under a separate item for the actual approval of the contract terms and of the fee. And upon that approval, we engage the architect to continue into design phase. For a construction manager, it's very similar, the exception being that once we conclude interviews with the construction manager, the contract only has the fee involved. It's a locked-in fee. It's their overhead and profit combined because the actual price of the school or design is not known yet because we haven't had the design firm engaged far enough along to produce any sort of pricing. So when we come back later, we come back with an amendment to the board for not only the price but also the timeframe from which the contractor is going to complete the project. And based on that approval, all aspects in terms of approval from the board are met. And if it's a project where we're adding new space, we bring separately from the selection process to the board a what we call Phase 3 construction set of documents for the board to approve so that the board knows going in what the school is going to look like and what aspects of the project are going to pertain to public education. That's it in a thumbnail sketch or nutshell. Be happy to answer any questions for you. Again, this selection process applies to all four items on the board. We have two for the architectural piece and two for the construction management piece.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Perhaps as we get into discussion of each individual item, if there is question from a board member, then you could answer it at that time. Thank you for being here.
Sure. I'll be sent a bite.
Perfect. So moving on to Item D-10.1, may I have a motion to approve professional services selection recommendation for architectural design services for new elementary schools W. and X. projects 24101 and 24102?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Is there any discussion? Dr. James.
Chair, I do want to say the process has been great. I'm excited that I got to be a part of it, but I will have to recuse myself from all four of these items as well.
Thank you for that. Any additional discussion on this item? Yes, Vice Chair Thrower.
Just for the community's understanding, I think this process has been really great. It's been transparent. It always has been in the past, but you know, these days you have to take everything to a whole nother level, and we're doing that in the spirit of being proactive and helping the community from the get-go, understanding, you know, the tremendous need and having a good grasp, those that are interested on the process. I really want to thank the selection committee, which was a great and varied group. I see two principals' names here, you know, that are current elementary school principals. That's important, you know, and it's all important. So I just wanted to extend my thanks and gratitude and true approval of this process. I'm looking forward to saying yes.
Reverend Cummings.
Madam Chair, I didn't clearly hear what Dr. James' statement was.
I'm going to recuse myself from the vote, seeing as I was a part of the selection of the contractors and architects.
I might ask a question while with that, that be necessary. We've had other board members on committees, and they still did not recuse themselves.
That would be a question.
Attorney Powers.
Yes, sir. I do not believe in this case it is absolutely necessary.
I don't think so either.
However, I do believe that she's abstaining upon recommendation of counsel simply because she served on a committee that was partial for selection.
Was she the solo person that made the decision, or was it a committee decision?
You're correct. It was a committee decision, and therefore it would not be required.
I just want her to know that.
Yes, yes, sir. However, upon recommendation of counsel and also because of discussions I've had with her, it just indicated that that is the proper path to move forward, so that there's no question. So sometimes, as attorneys, you know, we're a lot that are over-cautious sometimes, and so we do things in an abundance of caution.
And if I might add, I do believe that, well, first, every contractor and architect we were a part of interviewing was highly complimentary of the process that Marion County Public Schools has. They were so impressed that principals were at the table having the conversation, and were a part of being able to ask questions. So our process is really grade A. It's a really great process. And I feel really strongly that we have chosen the right people as a selection committee, and I believe this board is going to fully support the decision of a selection committee. So I am very comfortable not being a part of the vote because I do believe that you all are going to do a great job voting yes on these items and getting it across the finish line, so.
Chair, I do want to say, in addition to, and thank you, Dr. James, for that transparency, but I did just want to make sure that the public knew that it was not a solo Dr. James' decision on any of this. It was a team recommendation. I do want to also thank the committee as well because it is good to see principals on this list. It is good to see our safe schools director on this list because as we go forward, we know that our schools have to be safer, and we have to take those things into consideration as we're building schools, and everyone that was on this list for the selection committee. So thank you to that committee as well.
Thank you. Ms. Conrad, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything in addition. I too am just grateful. I really, when looking over these, I was very excited to see principals on the list. What a great, what a great opportunity to get feedback. So I too am grateful for the work of the committee and look forward to moving forward.
Thank you. And just echoing what fellow board members have stated here, I do appreciate the opportunity and the transparency for Dr. James to share the idea of recusing herself from the votes. Absolutely, Reverend Cummings, it's not entirely necessary, and we have had other board members serve in committees of the Code of Student Conduct and different things like that. I do think that this is a unique opportunity for us as a school district, at least in the last dozen years or more, because these particular items do have cost associated with them as opposed to some of the other, that's my personal opinion, and I understand you're shaking your head no, but this is my moment to say my personal opinion.
The reason I'm saying no is-
Reverend Cummings? Yes, sir.
Saying no is because we've had a situation in recent history since I've been on the board where there was a board member that was on the committee, and we chose a vendor for that. So that was in the recent committee, and if you want me to tell you, it was an external operator.
Okay.
So that's, I'm just correcting that. I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay.
I'm just stating that, that it has happened recently.
And that's fine. Again, as I stated previously, this is a unique opportunity for us with a very high-dollar amount, multimillion-dollar projects we're about to engage in, which haven't been done in more than a dozen years in this community. And so I appreciate the transparency and the recommendation from counsel and from Dr. James with the decision she's made. The four of us, apart from Dr. James, are certainly able to vote on this. So if there's no additional discussion on it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the professional services selection recommendation for construction management services for new technology and information services building, Project 24100?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower, second by Reverend Cummings. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the professional services selection recommendation for construction management services for new elementary school W., Project 24-1001?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the professional service selection recommendation for construction management services for new elementary school X., Project 24-1002?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 4-0. With that, I will note that there will be a special school board meeting on September 7th, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. to do much of what we just did right now as well. We're going to have a few of these. And the following administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for September 7th, 2023, at 9 a.m. So immediately following that special board meeting, we will have an administrative briefing and work session that also includes our going into attorney-client session immediately at 9 a.m. And, hot off the presses, on September 8th at 2 p.m., just for informational sake, this is not an official board meeting where the board will take action, but we will be having the groundbreaking for the Marion Technical College expansion. That will be occurring on September 8th at 2 p.m., and invitations will be going out later today. Okay, with that, let's move on to board committee and comments. Ms. Martinez, anything from board clerk's office?
Yes, Madam Chair. For the day in the legislators, I have most of you that have responded. I just need to know for reservation purposes, Mr. Cummings, are you planning to attend? And that is January 17th to January 18th?
Yes.
Okay. And Dr. James?
What day are we in Tallahassee? The 18th or the 17th?
The 18th is the day we're meeting with legislators. The 17th is the day that the sessions begin. So there's actually a professional development that occurs while we're in Tallahassee, and that begins on the 7th for an afternoon session, and then, excuse me, 17th for the afternoon session, and then the 18th is a morning session, and then the afternoon is to meet with legislators.
Is that the day that?
It's different than the day we're already planning to. We are going as a board in November.
Okay.
But this is separate, this is during the FSBA time in Tallahassee.
Okay. So if I go, I will drive the day of?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second thing is, let's move on to the Tampa Winter Conference because those reservations open up on September 18th. Can I get a confirmation, who is attending for reservation purposes, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody? Everybody?
I think some of us go different days, though, because I don't think-
Right.
That's November 29th through December 1st. That is the winter conference in Tampa with FSBA.
There's something on Tuesday, though, I believe, but I-
If you're on committees, usually you guys have to, if you're on a committee, usually there's something the day before the start of the general session.
There's a board meeting, board directors meeting.
Yes, so if you're on a committee throughout FSBA, you need to let Elena know when you're going down.
When the schedule comes out, so I think, I think we're all going, but when the schedule comes out, and I think that's coming out, you said September 18th, then perhaps we can just respond to let you know if we need that Tuesday or if we can start hotel on a different day, so.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
When does, excuse me, Chair, when does registration open?
September 18th for the winter conference.
Okay, because that is an important date where even if we're not, it sounds like we're going to be certain what days each of us as individuals need to be there, but that September 18th day is important to make the reservations, if at all possible, on that day because it fills up that quickly and we know what that's like.
If you know you're on a committee and you need an extra day, just let me know so I can make sure.
I was going to say that. I was going to go ahead and say that we know Chair Campbell and myself are both on committees, and you can give it in the record now that you, we're going to probably be there that Tuesday.
Okay, so make the reservation on the 28th.
Yeah. And I'm not sure, are you ladies on any committees right now?
No.
Okay. So we know this, both Chair Campbell and myself.
Thank you.
Terrific. Anything else from you, Ms. Martinez?
Thank you.
Wonderful. Attorney Powers, anything from legal?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, hard to believe it's September, and we've just come out of a hurricane. So I just wanted to share my thanks with all of you. You all were there, came to the EOC, were out at shelters, and for the community to know as well the tremendous support that we had from our team. We were very fortunate in the storm. But we, as you all know, we had six shelters. Mr. McFadden, who's here this morning, led the effort for us and coordinated all of this. My credible thanks to him and his team, but I want to share some numbers with all of you. For those six shelters, we had 231 occupants total, including the special needs shelter. Staff members that served during the hurricane for the purpose of the shelters and the readiness of the shelters were 225 staff it took to do that. We had 23 law enforcement officers assisting with the shelters. We had 17 animal services staff assisting at the shelters because we were pet-friendly in several of our locations, as you know, and we had 24 health department staff assisting with those in special needs. We also had 29 pets and, including a hamster, which we've had some fun with.
Bruno.
At Vanguard. So for the staff purposes, it included and it took to have six shelters, transportation department, food service department, tech service department, technology, safe schools, business services, academic services. It takes everyone's efforts, and we are very pleased to do so, but I didn't want it to go unnoticed, the incredible commitment. It takes everyone's efforts, and we are very pleased to do so, but I didn't want it to go unnoticed, the incredible commitment, all of our principals and teams out at the schools that were manning those shelters overnight, who are not with their families during the storm, that they're all there, all of our team members, to ensure that we are open to the public and have a safe place for them to be. I just don't want it to go unnoticed, and I wanted to extend my sincerest thank you. In other communities, it's not always at schools, but in our community, they're all at schools. And so, we are appreciative because nobody complained, and everyone is always willing to serve gratefully. But I just think it's important that we acknowledge that. So, thank you for your support during the storm, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Dr. James?
Good morning. So, great, I'm so excited we got these items approved today, and we're going to get moving on this. There's going to be some great stuff happening. One of the questions I asked when we were in these interviews was, when are we going to see breaking ground? When can people drive by and see it happening? And by the spring of next year, we should be able to drive by work sites and start seeing things happening. And that's really exciting, because I think our community will be able to, you know, right now it's just talk, and it's, and it's been so long, maybe it's hard to believe that it's actually going to happen, and so I'm really excited to be able, in a not-so-distant future, be able to drive by and see a school going up. So it's going to be a really awesome thing. To Dr. Gullett's point, the shelter situation is always been one that is unique in Marion County. Who works shelter duty is something that I have always struggled with. As a former administrator myself, I always thought, hey, I live in Anthony and I was going to work shelters in Bellevue. That doesn't seem like, why would you want someone to drive 30 minutes in the rain? But there are lots of areas of improvement, but I want to, I want to just say publicly, one of the things that I felt a little disheartened by was as I watched communication come from different agencies, there was an absence of notification and praise for the work that Marion County Public School did in the shelters. The shelters opened because 200 and however many of our staff members showed up to work the shelters. The shelters opened for our community because our administrators, I can speak to Matt Johnson at North Marion Middle, who's the principal of that school and was at that shelter for 36 hours straight. He slept in his office and came back to work. So, it is, it is disheartening when the narrative in the community does not include Marion County Public Schools and the work that we do in a storm to support the number of individuals who needed sheltering during the storm. Because 45,000 students didn't have learning for two days so that we could open our doors to the 200 and some individuals in our community or outside of our community who needed support. And that is what being a community is all about, is extending that grace and that availability. But it is disheartening for me as a school board member and a member of this community to feel like we are not acknowledged for the work that we do to make sure that this community stays afloat during a storm. So I would just ask other agencies to consider including us when they give public praise, because it was very evident that we were not included in that praise, and that definitely hurt my heart as a school board member when I go out to shelters and I walk in at 7 p.m. on Tuesday, Tuesday night, and I see 30-plus employees, and they're not with their families, and it would be nice to get that recognition. So, that concludes my comments for this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
Good morning, everyone. Again, we've echoed, Dr. James has mentioned about us moving forward in the process of building schools and getting some new elementary schools. Excited about that, as Dr. Gullett superintendent stated. The storm, we were, we were blessed that we didn't have to endure a lot with this storm. I do too want to thank all of our principals and staff that were out there. Principal Johnson, and he was doing a tremendous job out in the North Marion area, and all of them, Carlisle, Wade, Connor, Rembrandt, Cruz, and their teams, their staff, they were truly doing a tremendous job. And, and one of the things that I got out of this as I walked around was to make sure that, because they made the sacrifice to come out and work the shelters, how, the question was, is your house okay? Is your situation good at home? Do you leave it in the right situation, in the right state? So, I appreciate them. I appreciate every person that was there, because it is a sacrifice to leave your family and go out into the community and share. We talk about those that worked prior to the storm, but I also want to talk about those who worked after the storm, because once we got the all clear, we had to have a recovery team to go in there and get those schools back up to par so that we can be ready to open on Thursday. So I want to thank that, that group of people, because they had to come in and, and, and clean areas where dogs were and all that kind of stuff, and animals, and make sure that the schools were back ready yesterday morning to have those students there. So, I truly appreciate the recovery cleanup team as well, and I want to leave them out. Transportation always does a tremendous job to be out there on that road when the wind is blowing and navigating those vans, those trucks, those buses, I'm sorry. And then also, my final comment is on next Wednesday, September 6th from 1 to 4, the Crown, we are in the Crown region, and that's going to be up at Lake Butler, Union County. So Elena, I don't know if you got this, but I'll forward this email to you. There is a FSBA Crown Region Members Meeting next Wednesday from 1 to 4, and we're looking forward to seeing all of us go up. I hope everyone is going up. But there's going to be some things that, it's going to be talking about what Marion County is going through. One of the topics is recent trends on facilities constructions and questions we should be asking, and tips for communicating effectively with our community, district staff, school board peers, and the panel discussion, and the review of some current resources for FSBA members. So, that's next, Wednesday, September 6th, 1 to 4, and look forward to going to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Ms. Conrad?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. I want to say as a new board member, the process of going through preparing for a hurricane and working through a hurricane, I was very proud to be a member of Marion County Public Schools because we had a heavy lift. And Dr. James, I'm, I'm sorry that there was not any recognition. I didn't, I wasn't really aware of that or tuned into it, but with the privilege of being a part of the process, I'm just very disappointed to hear that, because the lift was huge from Marion County Public Schools between facilities and staff members and our custodians and transportation, all of those things. It's just very surprising, and, and I'm very proud of the commitment from our staff, the time and the sacrifice from our staff. So, I see this as an opportunity for us to have improvement in the participation between other community agencies so that Marion County has some relief for their staff members in particular. So, a learning opportunity is what I see going forward for us to make improvements as a district in getting cooperation from, from other areas. So, just thank you to our staff members, our team members, everyone that was involved. It was a long couple of days, even though we were extremely blessed. I woke up in the middle of the night checking my radar, and I'm like, just, Ocala was just sitting in this little pie shape of clear, clear weather, so we really were blessed. So, thanks to everyone for their work. You're appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Vice Chair Thrower?
Thank you, and, and yes, as I think about this, sheltering has always had its challenges and will continue to do so, so we might as well take the bull by the horns like we do for everything else. And I would like to see a work session on this so that we can really, you know, dig deep into what goes right and, and what our challenges are. These hurricanes are wildly unpredictable and wildly inconvenient. This one shifted quite a bit in the middle of the night. I, I think to myself, gosh, to have 225 of our staff with 231 students, that would be a great ratio that some of our really highly needed kids would benefit from. But, but we have no way of knowing what a storm's going to do, so, so we get all hands on deck, and, and everyone does that. The worst catastrophe I can think of, and the worst example of total lack of planning, would be to be underprepared versus over-prepared. So I look forward to a work session item on this topic. We really need to delve into sheltering our special needs. We know that it takes a lot of time. There's over 600 citizens with special needs on our registry, and it is our bus transportation folks, along with Marion Services, that literally goes out to the homes and encourages these folks, once they say they want to come, but you can show up to the house, and then they'll say maybe they don't want to go because it's sunny right now, and, you know, there's just so much with this to try to get people to safety as early as possible. Just as an example, over in Pasco County, which had a terrible storm surge, they literally pulled 150 people from the water. That's really, really scary. So, we were very fortunate to have been spared, you know, the brunt of this storm, but we were ready, we, we were prepared. It is a collaborative effort that is largely driven by Marion County Public Schools when it comes to the sheltering element. And so, yes, let's, let's definitely talk about it. I am hopeful that we may be able to come up with some other options, again, for sheltering our citizens with special needs, because if we were able to do that, we only would have lost one day of school versus two days of school. And I think that this board has heard a lot about how important it is to the community for us to be a high-performing school district. And let's face it, the disruption of a hurricane knocks everybody off schedule, knocks everybody off routine. Yes, we recovered quickly from that, back in school on Thursday. Thank you to everyone that went around and had to check every single school to make sure that they actually could be reopened. We said we want it to be open today, but, but that could not have the final checkmark until every single one of those schools was checked for safety. So, you know, you lose two days, and there's momentum that needs to be recreated. You know, yes, we did a great job of doing that, but still, it's, it's time lost. So, as our community continues to grow exponentially and we have other buildings, I think that we need to be taking a look at that. So I, I look forward to that conversation. I also just wanted to ask Attorney Powers about any updates on our impact fee ordinance? Have you heard back from the county?
I actually have a meeting scheduled with the city of Ocala and the county attorneys this afternoon to discuss just in broad, general outlines of what legalities we may encounter. And so I have not heard anything back other than direct communication with my counterparts to try to make sure that everyone understands where we are and to make sure that any concerns can be properly dealt with.
Okay, thank you.
So I haven't heard anything beyond that.
Okay, so we definitely have not heard anything beyond the fact that we approved it based on the information that was shared at our public local officials meeting, addressed those concerns. So our ordinance was updated to reflect that, and then we voted, sent it over last Tuesday.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not an agenda item yet that you know of for them to vote on?
Ma'am, I was, I, they do have it on an, an agenda under discussion for next Wednesday.
Okay, good.
But it is a discussion non-votable item. It is a discussion item to, I believe, just have a public conversation about the impact fee, is the way that I've, the way I reviewed the agenda.
Okay, and that's the county's meeting?
The county commission meeting at 9 a.m.
On Tuesday.
You said Wednesday, that's why I got confused.
Oh.
I know, I'm-
It's September 6th, so September 6th is Wednesday. Yes, it is Wednesday next week, sorry. They moved it because of Labor Day.
Got it, got it. Okay, so it's Wednesday, September 6th and 9th.
And I'm, I've heard that their meetings, like, to get to a discussion could take hours, so I'm not really, I don't know when that topic will come up in the day, but I did note it on their agenda, so.
Okay, I'll take a look at the agenda again and see how far down it is, or-
Could I ask Attorney Power, I don't mean to interject on your comments, can I ask Attorney Powers a question?
Please do, and with that, I'm done. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
From today's meeting, could you establish some next steps and timelines for what you, what they expect, or what they will be doing next? Or can we at least establish a timeline for what, where we are?
I'd, I'd prefer to wait until I discuss that with my counterparts, because I, most of the timeline from here would include steps that the county needs to take.
Oh, no, I don't mean you. In your discussion with them today, can you ask them for a timeline? If they're unable to give that to you, certainly, then that's where you'll report back. But I do believe there should be some level of responsibility for establishing a timeline to move forward. I mean, I, this is just this board member speaking, but I don't believe that we should just continue to float along. We've done our work, we've made our decision, and I think that I would love for you to ask if they can establish a timeline.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hence the reason for my comment.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Madam Chair, I do echo in something Vice Chair Thrower said. She mentioned about with the hurricane shelters and the possibility of us having some type of conversation, work session, meeting. I don't know what it would be, but there needs to be some type of meeting, conversation, concerning concerns and issues that we all saw, that we may, we need to discuss before this happens again. As, as Vice Chair said, we possibly could have got away with only having a half a day being closed, or one day being closed, a day and a half. But I think we need to have a conversation, and how can we schedule that with the other entities?
Thank you to all board members on speaking on all of these things. I, as you were talking, I had different things to share along the way. I appreciate your comments, Dr. James, about not seeing a public appreciation as such for Marion County Public Schools. I can say that the sheriff did portray privately in the EOC his appreciation, because there was a decision that was made very early for us to close, because we understood at that time, when we needed to make that decision, what that storm looked like. And as Preston Boland in Emergency Management continued to say, just 30-mile shift, just a 30-mile shift is going to change everything for us, and that's exactly what happened. I talked to a board member in Levy County about Cedar Key and just how devastated it has been there. They are not opening schools again until Tuesday next week, and that's the plan right now in Levy County, and that's just one of the counties that was impacted. We were very fortunate and blessed and spared in this situation, but we do need to continue to have thoughts and prayers for those that are still coming out from, from the storm, and just praying that we have a very inactive hurricane season. To your point, Vice Chair Thrower, about an alternative plan, and also, Ms. Conrad mentioned, you know, as a new board member, seeing what it's like from the EOC, but I'm also going to say from Reverend Cummings' point, we need to have this as a community conversation. This can't be a, while a work session would be terrific for the school board to have, it's not a singular conversation for the school board to have. Emergency management is an operation of the sheriff's office that is a function of the Board of County Commissioners, and with all of the heads in the room, perhaps it would be an agenda item, should we have an intergovernmental meeting in the fall like we have the past two years, that might be an agenda item that would be very helpful. Granted, it'll be after this hurricane season, but we do need to get all the municipalities in the room to have those kinds of conversations, because depending on where this had hit, Dunellen would have been impacted very significantly, and their city manager, city council needs to have a part of that conversation. What are solutions in that specific community for their residents? Or, moving on, you know, we could go on into the forest. If this had hit Volusia County a little differently and come in across lake, and we would have had some issues in the forest and Fort McCoy, and so we, we really, depending on where this storm hits or where a storm hit, it has the potential to impact multiple portions of our county in very different ways, from flooding and everything else. But as Ms. Conrad was saying, not only is it fascinating to see how the Emergency Operations Center operates, it's fascinating, as a school board member who did not grow up in the state of Florida, and also who did not grow up in Marion County, to understand that it is the school- school district's responsibility to man, to not only open shelters, but to man them. And that was what was fascinating to me. They are not law enforcement officers, they are not healthcare workers. The people that I think of previously, before becoming a school board member in Florida, I thought if a shelter opens in an area, an organization like the Red Cross comes in and takes care of that and volunteers, I, I mean, honestly, that, that's, that's what the exterior perspective is until you get in the trenches and you start seeing principals and assistant principals in your safe schools department and all the people that, that show up and, and visiting. It, it was cute, I did talk to one of the shelter residents and one of our high school's little young student and who said, are we going to have snack like we do in regular school? And I said, high school doesn't have snack. She's like, what, why? But it, it was, it's fascinating to me that it is our staff's responsibility and it is the school district's responsibility, every shelter, all the time. And so that is a conversation, I think, needs to be a collective conversation that we bring to the table to start talking to our community about additional solutions and what that looks like. Thank you also for bringing up the county commission meeting. It is coming up on Wednesday, the 6th. Looking at their agenda, I have it pulled up right now, the way the impact fee conversation is listed on their agenda is under the county attorney and it is saying that the county attorney will provide an update regarding the educational system impact fee. So my hope is while he has already submitted something here for review for the commission, after their meeting today, there potentially will be additional feedback and information that he can share with them. I also wanted to note, just while we're having the conversation, also on their September 6th agenda, the county is requesting approval to schedule a workshop to discuss a one cent sales tax and they're going to have that workshop on October 10th. So just for information, I know that that was a conversation that came up during our most recent joint meeting with them, but I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. And finally, just to say thank you again. Thank you, I'm going to say thank you to the Lord for keeping us safe through the storm, but also for the provision and the protection. I remember watching through this storm, the Weather Channel actually talking about how the winds were stronger in the atmosphere than they were on the ground, much, much stronger in the atmosphere than there were on the ground. And as an individual, I have to say, and as a believer, that's provision and that's the Lord blessing and protecting as much as possible because he controls the winds and the waves and you guys know that I've said that multiple times in previous storms. But thank you again to our staff as well for all the work and the dedication and the hours and to the board and the work and the dedication and the hours and the EOC, all of the work that's been going on. I also want to say a special thanks, this is not storm-related, to Attorney Powers and all the work that's been done on this impact fee conversation, the work at the man-hours that he's been putting in, all hours of the day and night, taking phone calls for me and others, just appreciate the, the work. We're, we are doing great things and this board is driven. This board is driven, we are motivated, we have a lot of fact on our side, we have a lot of information on our side and I'm excited that this board is getting things done. And Superintendent, right alongside with us, lockstep, that we're, we're moving forward and we are looking forward and we are going to help every student succeed. That may mean a lot of different things that this board has never done before, but we're moving forward and I'm excited about it. So with that, that concludes my comments and I will then accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Motion by Dr. James, second by Reverend Cummings. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0, meeting adjourned at 9:20 AM. Thank you.